All right, nine oh five AM. We're going to begin this work session, Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. We're going to start off with calendar review by Sandra Pettis.
Good morning.
Sandra, good morning.
Sandra, can I ask you a quick question about your, about calendars?
Yes.
Do, do you have access to the community calendar?
Um, like main calendar on the website?
Not, not ours.
Oh.
The community calendar.
Oh, no.
Like all of the, okay.
I do not.
I'm gonna get you access to that because I just don't want to like, it'd be great if we weren't planning community things when other, community things are happening.
Right, no, that would be fantastic.
Is there something coming up that's kind of a double booked time slot?
Well, we did, we had the youth summit, which was meant to be a lobbying, lobbying opportunity to elected officials and decision makers at the same time that we did the Ski Cooper thing. And anyway, I didn't, I wasn't looking at the community calendar, so. I will get Sandra that one.
Thank you all. All right. Start on the nineteenth. Commissioner Elsa will be in her office from ten to three. And the VOCC joint work session with Chaffey County from three to four thirty in VB. Tuesday, the twentieth. We have a regular meeting from eleven to two. City Council has their regular meeting from six to eight. And I believe this is still on Conservation District monthly meeting from six to eight. Wednesday, the twenty first, Community Coffee, eight thirty to ten. So, shall I go on there? The twenty second, the twenty second Fire Management Board meeting. Maybe this is the one that got rescheduled a few times, correct, Matt?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And Friday, the twenty third, Twin Lakes Community Coffee. From nine to ten. So, all in all, looking pretty easy week so far. Yeah, I was gonna say, definitely do that. But it just takes a show, so, okay. Um, should be good to go with number two.
All right, moving.
Oh, and that's just, you're, you're not getting to play it yet. Uh, no, no, just a calendar review for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, that looks like, uh, Jillian and Emma here.
Moving on, agenda item number two, overview and update from the Brendel Group on the CAP or Climate Action Plan, study and staffing recommendations for the Sustainability Coordinator position. This will be led by County Manager Candace Brians and Community Planning and Development Director Anne Schneider.
So, I am actually going to turn this over to Anne, who has been working on this project, and let her share just a little bit about their work and then their staffing recommendations along with the thank you to some people from the Brendel Group to give some insight to it.
If you click on the PowerPoint at the bottom, there's a presentation relook, yeah.
Do you want, want that now?
Yeah.
Or you could sit up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'll just go.
Come on. There.
Join us.
So, good morning, everyone. Um, we have the Brendel Group here to kind of start off our presentation this morning. Um, so we have Jillian and Imogen here from the Brendel Group. And what we thought we would do is give the board, this was already a kind of a check-in point on the scope of work with the Climate Action Plan. And so, we thought it would be really beneficial. We've just done a little bit of a course correction on just kind of the oversight of the coordination with the consultants. And so, we thought this was a great time to introduce the Brendel Group and have them to give you an update, a status update of where we're at, and just kind of an overview of this, the entire scope of work. And so, today, they're going to go ahead and just give us that update. And we're going to follow that up with the Steering Committee. We have formed a Steering Committee. Um, and the representatives on that include Duncan and myself and Melissa, Emily from C4, Michael Irwin from Public Works, and previous Julia, and now Kelsey from Public Health. Um, and I think that rounds out our Steering Committee. So, we've been joining and having conversations and convening on kind of next steps around coordination of the, with, with Brendel. And so, we're going to have a staffing recommendation coming for, forward after their presentation today. So, I'm going to turn it over, um, I, I believe, I think maybe to Jillian. Um, and she's going to go ahead and start, and I will run the PowerPoint here, so.
Perfect, thank you so much, Anne. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, Jillian Goulay, Sustainability Analyst from the Brendel Group. Really glad to be here today to have this conversation with you. Anne, let me know when the slide deck is ready on your end.
Oh, okay, yep, it's ready. And are you able to see it? Are we sharing currently?
I only see the agenda being shared because.
Here we go. Again, let me see if I can do it. Over there.
And if you all can see it on your end, I have it pulled up on my end as well. So, however you need to do it is great.
Perfect, okay, are you able to see that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. So, we are here today to talk about the Climate Action Plan, as Anne mentioned. Um, we know that the previous board approved and signed the contract. So, we want to use this time as kind of level setting, as well as providing updates on our status, um, as far as our contracts in developing this Climate Action Plan. So, the project purpose is developing a community-focused Climate Action Plan for Lake County, highlighting actions to also improve community resilience. So, there's kind of two parts to climate action planning. Um, reducing emissions, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and preparing for the changes that we know are coming and that you're already seeing. So, we are from Brendel Group. Our mission is to accelerate equitable solutions to the climate crisis. And we have engineers and analysts and planners on our team, um, who work as consultants to create lasting impacts, to sustain and inspire communities in our worlds. That's really why we want to do this work. Um, so, we can go to the next slide. Our team is myself as the Project Manager, Imogen Ainsworth as our Senior Project Manager, and then Paulina Samosa is Engagement Support. Um, she's our Engagement Specialist, um, and she also offers bilingual Spanish and English support, um, which we're really excited about when we talk about engagement a little bit later on. Next slide, please, perfect. And as Anne mentioned, we are working with a Steering Committee from the county, as well as the City of Leadville and Cloud City Conservation Center. So, um, these three entities have been providing us guidance, um, as far as the local pieces, right? All of this work that we're doing is great. We can provide context from other communities and from national and global science. But these folks have really been providing that local context that's so vital to climate action planning. Next slide, please. So, why are we doing this? First, Community Wide Climate Action Plan is funded by, not the Colorado Energy Office, that was an error on our part, uh, but by the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Grant Funding. So, they have a whole list of items that we need to include in a Climate Action Plan in order to meet the requirements of the grant. So, um, an example is a greenhouse gas inventory to establish a baseline of emissions, uh, which we will talk about a little later on in our presentation. Um, another why, right, is to prepare to access future funding opportunities. A lot of funding is coming out, especially from the state right now with federal funding kind of up in the air. Um, but a lot of those state funding opportunities, um, you get priority if you have a greenhouse gas inventory in place, if you have a Climate Action Plan that you're actively implementing. So, this can unlock a lot of funding opportunities for the county moving forward. We also want to understand community priorities and develop goals related to climate action resilience. Another piece of that DOLA grant funding is figuring out a way for the county to align with state climate action goals. Um, but figuring out how that looks in Lake is kind of the question mark there, right? The state has already set a goal. How does your community really want to reach that? Um, and then finally, creating a strategic action plan to reduce emissions and prepare for those future climate impacts, right? We don't just want to say, hey, go do this. We want this to be really strategic. We want to, um, build on what the community is already doing because you're already doing so much. Next slide, please. And then again, just some of this level setting. Um, this is an example of a Climate Action Plan outline that we see pretty frequently, right, where we have this executive summary that's really graphically designed, communicating the vision and goals and strategies in the plan. Then the introduction of the whys, right? Why is this important to Lake County in particular? Um, that climate change overview and emissions overview, all of that good stuff. And then looking at the vision and goals and focus areas and those solutions, right? That's really the meat of the planning process. And then a detailed implementation plan. Um, we want to make sure that anything that is in the plan is really actionable, so this doesn't just sit on the shelf, right? We want this to be able to further your community goals and work in tandem with all of the other plans that you already have in place, that you're already implementing or developing. Next slide, please. So, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the project's scope and deliverables, again in the spirit of you all were not here, right? It was previous commissioners who approved this contract and scope of work. So, we want you to be aware of what's happening. Um, so, task one is project management. That's fairly straightforward. Uh, we've been meeting bi-weekly with the Steering Committee. We've established file management and general project management practices. Um, and then we will eventually have the project close out under this task as well. Task two is the greenhouse gas inventory, which I keep alluding to. It will be coming up pretty soon in this presentation. Um, and this establishes a baseline for community-wide and municipal greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, we'll be sharing the community-wide inventory today, and this is based on 2023 data. Task three is an existing conditions analysis. Again, we need to know what's going on in your community to create a really useful plan. So, um, we reviewed existing plans and policies that were identified by county staff for us to review, um, so that we can understand priorities and existing actions and crosscutting themes, um, that have already been prioritized by your community. Um, task four is a vulnerability and resilience assessment. Um, Imogen is going to talk about this a little bit later. She led up this task. Um, and it's looking at the climate risks to the community and how that interplays with social dynamics. Um, task five is community engagement, which we will talk about, um, in some depth later on. Um, this includes two work sessions with you all today, um, and then another one later on, two in-person community engagement events, a community survey, engagement toolkit, and engagement summary where we bring it all together afterward. Um, I do want to note that we are in discussions with the Steering Committee right now about potentially adjusting our scope. Um, so, some of this may be subject to change, but this is our current contracted scope. Um, we'll go to our next slide, please. Task six is greenhouse gas modeling. So, once we have that baseline saddle, we've got 2023 data, and then we talk to the community about what they want to see, then we can see what is the greenhouse gas emissions impact in reducing emissions in accordance with the actions identified. Um, this includes modeling two scenarios, showing the actions, right? This is where we look at, um, future emissions and think about potential economic and population growth. Um, task seven is cost analysis, measurements, and prioritization. So, it's figuring out, okay, we have all of these actions that have been identified by the community. How do we prioritize these so we can, um, put them in the plan in bite-sized chunks? So, it's not overwhelming, and we again have that detailed timeline for implementation. And task eight is putting it all into a plan. It's drafting, um, the Climate Action Plan and developing those final climate action goals. And then task nine is plan adoption. So, that's finalizing the plan. Um, we'll come back and talk to you all one more time. Um, and we'll provide that summary PowerPoint and the externally facing executive summary, um, which helps to communicate with plans to the public, and we're prioritizing that to be in both English and Spanish, um, to reach a wider variety of community members. Next slide, please. So, the other piece of the contract is the timeline. Um, based on the current contract, this slide is a little bit different. Um, we didn't get the contract signed and finalized until the end of December last year. So, um, we shifted the timeline back three months or so. We, I believe originally had it set to begin in September. Um, so, we are adjusting that a little bit, um, to meet this kind of twelve-month timeline we're looking at here. Um, this is also potentially subject to change. Um, we're again in discussions for, um, scope adjustments with the Steering Committee, and that could potentially include, um, a timeline adjustment as well, depending on priorities there. All right, we can go to our next slide, and I'm going to pass it over to Imogen to talk about some climate change impacts in the county.
Thanks, Jillian, and, uh, my name is Imogen Ainsworth. I'm the Senior Project Manager and a Lead Sustainability Analyst at Brendel Group, and it's nice, um, to meet you. Thanks for having us today. Uh, if you go to the next slide. So, one of the first, um, steps that we took in developing the Climate Action Plan was to conduct this risk and vulnerability assessment. And so, we kind of started with a long list of potential climate hazards that could be facing Lake County and narrowed that down based on, uh, local climate data, um, working with the Steering Committee, um, looking at, uh, up-to-date climate science to understand what the primary climate hazards facing the county are. And we came up with these kind of three buckets, so wildfire, extreme temperatures, and then heavy rain, snow, and flooding. And then we looked at, um, factors in the community, so other challenges that are being faced in Lake County or other, um, considerations that might impact what climate change looks like in Lake County. And some of those factors that could amplify the local impact of climate change are population growth. Um, so, we know that the population is protected, is projected to grow by about fifteen hundred people, um, from 2020 to 2050, but also that, that could happen more quickly, um, if, as warming occurs elsewhere and people are moving into Lake County for the relatively cooler temperatures, um, or, or for various other reasons. Um, and if that population growth is occurring in areas that are particularly sensitive to climate hazards, so say the floodplain or in the wildland urban interface, then that could exacerbate the impact of these climate hazards in the community. Another potential amplifier is housing affordability. Um, so, we know that, um, housing cost is a, a issue all over Colorado and Lake County is no exception. Um, our estimated seventy-three percent of Lake County residents are spending more than forty-five percent of their household income on a combined housing and transportation costs, which just leaves less, um, income and flexibility and adaptability to, um, make changes, to move, to make improvements to their housing, um, in the face of some of these climate hazards. We know that energy cost is also part of that. Um, so, the housing quality and availability in Lake County could also be a climate impact amplifier, um, with many of the houses in the county being older, um, and in need of repairs or energy efficiency improvements that are resulting in higher energy costs or potential comfort, um, issues, uh, if there's, you know, extreme high temperatures or, um, flooding or wildfire air quality impacts as well. Aging infrastructure is another potential amplifier of climate change. So, outdated critical infrastructure like transportation, bridges, roads, um, drainage and sewage systems or power supply systems that are kind of nearing end of life or already, um, somewhat vulnerable to some of these impacts could be especially vulnerable as, um, climate change, um, exacerbates some of the impacts that are already being seen. And then lastly is, um, dependence on a climate-sensitive tourism industry. So, we know that accommodation, um, food services, and retail are among the largest employers and economic drivers within the county, and also that many county residents are traveling outside of Lake County to work in these sectors and other communities. And so, these, um, industries are highly dependent on snowpack, um, on access to recreational resources, to public lands, to clean air, um, or things that could be at risk with, uh, climate change impacts in the future. And then on the far right, um, we looked at disproportionately impacted groups. So, just recognizing that the impacts of climate change are not, um, kind of evenly distributed across the population, that there are certain groups who are especially vulnerable, um, to climate change impacts. And I'm not going to go through this whole list, but I think it's just recognizing that any, um, solutions to improve resilience to climate change impacts, um, should kind of come from a lens of thinking about what the impacts are on those who are most vulnerable first. So, the next slide. So, now I'm just going to go through, um, briefly each of the, uh, three kind of primary climate hazards that we identified in the Risk and Vulnerability Study. Um, so, starting with wildfire. So, when we look at the current and future risk of wildfire, this is probably not news to any of you, but one-third of Lake County's population live in high wildfire risk areas. Um, wildfire activity has also risen sharply since 2012, so we're seeing an increase in the, um, intensity and frequency of wildfire activity. And historical fire suppression and drought have increased wildfire risk, um, so periods of drought, um, over the last ten or fifteen years, together with a history of, a longer history of fire suppression in the forests, has increased the risk of wildfire. And then the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, um, that was completed in Lake County, found that many residents lack wildfire mitigation knowledge, so they didn't know where to go, um, to find information about, uh, wildfire mitigation or about creating defensible space around their homes. And they also did not have evacuation plans in place, which just increases the vulnerability, um, to this risk. And then when we look at the projected, um, direction of wildfire in the county, the frequency, size, and intensity of wildfires is expected to continue to increase into the future. And then why this matters, um, some of this may be pretty self-evident, but wildfires can pose a, a threat to sensitive, high-elevation ecosystems. So, much of the climate science is showing that high-elevation ecosystems, like those in Lake County, are particularly vulnerable to the impacts of climate change, and fire compose a risk to wildfire and wildlife and habitats, um, and also create, uh, erosion, soil destabilization, landslides, and flooding on burn scar areas. Fires also pose a direct safety threat, um, to people, buildings, infrastructure, and essential services. The air quality impacts on health, both of wildfires in Lake County and also from wildfires occurring further afield with smoke blowing into the county, um, can have health impacts, and particularly for some of those vulnerable or disproportionately impacted, um, groups that we, uh, talked about on the last slide. And then finally, there are significant economic impacts associated with wildfire, both from, um, the direct property and economic losses, and also from the suppression expenses associated with fighting wildfire, and also from other losses, you know, loss of tourism income if people can't, uh, access the public lands, or if the air quality is significantly impacting, um, people's, you know, desire to be outside in Lake County. Go to the next slide. So, the next one is extreme temperatures. Um, so, when we look at current and future risk, while Lake County doesn't have, um, a large number of very hot days, uh, more of them are expected in the future, and the average temperature has already increased by about one-point-five degrees since nineteen-hundred, um, and is expected to rise by another three to eight degrees, um, by the end of the century. One of the other main things that we see, um, in Lake County as far as the trends and the future projections is a reduction in the number of freezing nights. Um, so, there are currently about ten fewer freezing nights than there were in nineteen-fifty, and there could be up to forty fewer by twenty-one hundred. And that has impacts for, um, the implications for insect infestations, for, um, human health, for various other things associated with not just like increases in the high temperatures, but a decrease in the number of cold nights. And then this final point about rapid temperature flips, there's some, um, recent science coming out showing that rapid flips between very cold and very hot temperatures may become more common going forward, causing, um, uh, all kinds of challenges associated with adapting quickly to the different temperatures. And so, why it matters, I touched on this a little bit, but there are ecosystem impacts associated with heat stress over a longer period of time. And then also this increase in insect infestations due to warmer temperatures and fewer freezing nights. And that could be, um, insects with human health implications, but also like bark beetle and insects that are impacting the forest health, and therefore, um, also increasing the wildfire risk. Um, health impacts, um, tied to inefficient housing and a lack of cooling. Um, uh, you know, I think pretty much nobody has cooling right now in Lake County, but as the temperatures increase, that we might see a new demand, um, for cooling with, uh, an impact on energy cost for those who can adapt and potentially health impacts for those who can't. And then also economic losses, again, associated with the snowpack and tourism. Go to the next slide. So, the last one is heavy rain, snow, and flooding. Um, so, for the current and future risk, there are sixty-nine structures currently located in Lake County's mapped floodplain. And the hazard mitigation plan also, um, identifies that there are additional properties in low-lying areas and near waterways that are outside of the floodplain, but are also at risk of kind of periodic flooding. Um, most of the flooding in Lake County is flash flooding, um, associated with heavy rain over a short period of time. And this is exactly the type of precipitation that is expected to increase with climate change. So, the frequency and intensity of heavy rain and snow events is expected to increase, even if there's not a, a kind of like clear trend in the total amount of precipitation that will fall. Um, we're also expecting to see a greater proportion of the precipitation falling as rain, um, rather than snow, and to see snow melting earlier in the spring as temperatures rise. So, why it matters, um, is that heavy rain and rapid snow melt can overwhelm drainage systems and contaminate water sources. Um, heavy rain and, uh, flooding can threaten human life safety, property, and infrastructure. And then flooding and heavy snowbook and snowfall can disrupt transportation and economic activity. So, just seeing large amounts of, um, either rain or snow falling in a short period of time can have all sorts of disruptive impacts, um, to flooding and, as I'm sure, um, you've seen, to transportation and other activities in Lake County as well. So, I think that wraps up the Risk and Vulnerability Assessment, and I'll pass it back to Jillian to talk through, um, the emissions inventory.
Awesome, thanks, Imogen. Um, so, as we mentioned, there's two parts to climate action, right? It's that vulnerability piece and how we are adapting to those stressors that Imogen was talking about, and also reducing emissions. So, why are we measuring emissions? Um, greenhouse gases are gases in Earth's atmosphere that trap heat and contribute to global warming. I've heard them described as like, if you imagine a tennis ball covered up with a blanket, uh, greenhouse gases are like that blanket that hold in that heat, um, which is really important for us, right, to survive on this planet. It's the key to human life. But we see that human activities like burning fossil fuels are increasing that concentration in the atmosphere, leading to that overall warming trend globally. And, um, some people refer to it as like global weirdings, some just like weird weather trends, right? Some of those more extreme cold snaps in the winter when those polar vortexes come down from the poles, right? Um, but scientific and policy experts like the IPCC or Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, they tell us we need to act now to reduce them, to reduce emissions. Um, but first, we have to measure them, right? So, we have something to compare against so that we know the impacts of our reductions. So, we'll go to the next slide. Um, these are Lake County's community emissions. Um, total is almost ninety-two thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. That's that empty CO2e. Um, this is just the way that scientists measure, um, greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere. There are a lot of greenhouse gases out there, right? Carbon dioxide is the one we hear of a lot, but methane, for example, is another one. And they use carbon dioxide equivalent as just a way to say, okay, the impact of methane compared to carbon dioxide, we're just going to write it in terms of carbon dioxide's warming potential in the atmosphere. Um, it's just a metric. It doesn't really matter that much, but what does matter is what we're seeing as far as trends in Lake County, right? We see forty-one percent of emissions are from the transportation sector, but then when we look at electricity and natural gas and propane, that is fifty-one percent of emissions coming from buildings in the community, right? That tells me that there is a lot of opportunity for emissions reductions in building energy and in transportation, um, thinking about how we can make folks more comfortable in their homes, right? Um, and make homes safer and reduce energy bills, um, while also reducing emissions. Um, I think it's a really great opportunity. Then that last sector is, um, that other waste, waste. that other waste, wastewater, fugitive emissions, which is like natural gas losses in pipelines when it's not being burned quite yet, but it's still being emitted into the atmosphere. So those are Lake County's emissions. We do want to note that trees are also super important, right? You have a ton of public land, a lot of it's forested. So protecting those lands is also a key piece of climate action that's not included in the inventory. But we did want to highlight that piece as well. So moving into community engagement, this is that task five that we are potentially adjusting scope on, but again, this is the scope currently. We're looking at in-person events with tables at existing events hosted by our team and C4 and county staff. And the feedback that we're looking for from the community at those events, is there concerns for the future related to climate change? What are we worried about, right? Is it wildfire? Is it bug infestations, right? Just getting that feedback from the community and where they've seen climate change as well. Because we know it's already happening. And then their vision for the future, this idea of if we get climate change right, what happens? What does that look like? Because that can be a great driver for change. And then climate actions that they want to take, right? We don't want to write a plan that nobody wants to do. So if some folks are really excited about adding solar to buildings across the county, okay, great. How can they be champions for that action that we can then include in the plan? The community survey, the screenshot is on the right side of the screen. It is open now, and the feedback that we're looking for is where community members have seen climate change in the community and what climate actions they want to see. So there are some checkboxes, there are some optional fill-in answers. And this is available in English and Spanish. And if you're interested, we can provide links to this survey as well. And then we'll go to the next slide. And the other piece of community engagement after this broad outreach piece is one-on-one or group interviews. And the purpose of this is to connect with individuals or organizations who may not have been engaged through the events or survey, but whose input is still really important to this community-wide plan, right? We're not just focused on county emissions from municipal operations, it's focused on the community as a whole. We're also looking to gather detail on implementation, especially from staff, right? Going back to that building example I keep using, we don't want to put a ton of work on county staff. We want them to be involved in the how and who. We're not here to say, hey, you are going to get extra work on your plate, right? Even though you're already so busy and doing so much for the county. We want it to be a collaborative effort where people can help reduce emissions, but in ways that they're excited about and that don't overburden them. And these questions will be tailored to the group or individual that we're meeting with. And we'll dive into that additional detail needed to develop those detailed action planning steps. Next slide, please. So as far as next steps, community engagement is the big one. Kelsey from Public Health is kicking off community engagement tabling at an event tomorrow. And we are figuring out exactly who will be attending those in-person tabling events throughout the summer. Like I said, the survey is open and we're beginning to share that link out as well. Then, once that's finished, we're going to summarize the engagement results into actionable next steps, analyze those actions compared to projected greenhouse gas emissions. And then we're going to return to the commissioners to confirm that community priorities align with desired outcomes. What we don't want is for you to be surprised by what's in this plan when we come to you for adoption, right? We want to say, hey, this is a community priority. How does this align with what you want to see for the community? And how can we make a plan that kind of marries those two things? So that it is actionable, right? That's really the key to all of this, an implementable plan. So those are our next steps, and I believe that is our final slide for today. So Anne, I'll turn it back to you. We're happy to answer questions if there are any. But we know that you have other items to discuss during this agenda item today.
Great. So just take a pause and see if the board has any questions for Brendel before we can go into.
Yes, I have a few. Air traffic is one of the things I was wondering about. It seemed like our measured air traffic carbon output is pretty low. Is that, how did you guys measure how much CO2 emissions, that slice of that pie the airport puts out versus anything else? Is there any thought put into what happens if we increase the size of the airport or increase the traffic coming in and out of there, anything of that nature?
Great question. So right now, because it's not a commercial airport, right? We're not seeing those large airlines there. We are just measuring emissions based on the fuel that is used to fuel the planes at that airport. So greenhouse gas methodologies are a little bit about estimation, right, with the available data. So that's not the most exact piece of the pie, I would say. But that is the best data we had available. So it's not thinking about all of the planes that you see anywhere in the county, right? It's just the fuel that's purchased at that airport.
Okay, thanks. That answered another one of my questions too. Next one, when this CAP is like implemented or finalized, is there any concerns or have you ever seen evidence in any other areas where this will have an unintended consequence of insurance carriers using data from the COP CAP to deny or increase insurance costs?
That's a great question. We have not personally seen that. However, this is publicly available data. So maybe it's more personalized to Lake County, sure. But this is all publicly available. We didn't do any of these studies that are saying, okay, this portion of folks are in the floodplain, right? That data is already available to insurance carriers. So for that reason, we don't commonly see that occurring. It's not impossible, right? We can't avoid every scenario. But a purpose of this plan and the grant specifically from DOLA is to avoid those unintended consequences. So I really appreciate that we're considering these, right? Like, I think this question shows how much you care about the community, which is really reassuring to us in writing this plan.
And my last question was, we're looking at ways to combat emissions, and I think we just recently crossed a pretty serious threshold with the state of Colorado where they've found that our forests as a whole are now emitting more CO2 than they're absorbing by like a lot. How do we combat that and is that part of the plan, so to speak?
That's a great question. So we don't normally touch on those forest health impacts, right? We, that's where we look at the wildfire preparedness plans. Because to my knowledge of that study, right, it's saying that because of these high-intensity wildfires that we're seeing so frequently, that's where we're getting more emissions. So forest thinning efforts and any efforts for forest health will help mitigate that. So wildfire protection planning is more impactful than climate action planning, where we are looking more at the people piece and saying, yes, go implement your wildfire protection plan. That's incredible. What else can we do in addition to that, both pieces, right?
Great, thank you.
Gillian, in your, in the emissions report, is that a annual, your pie? This is how much annually to these sectors? And then is that, is that looking at the entire year? Because so much of our energy usage fluctuates, including tourism coming in and using and emitting in our county, like, does that consider the fluctuations of tourism?
It does, yes. So when we look at the inventory, that's for the calendar year of 2023. We can sometimes see variability. Let's say if winter of 2023 was a really mild winter, then maybe we don't see as much natural gas use as we would in another year. Which is the importance of checking back every two to three years on emissions to see those trend lines. But it does include those fluctuations, right? It's that full year of data. So natural gas use and electricity use from Excel Energy and then estimated from Sangre de Cristo. So we have those real usage numbers in there.
How do you determine how much, how many folks are coming into the county?
Yeah, so we, I think there's a couple pieces of that, right? So it's not directly us measuring tourism. But we have the energy usage for all buildings physically within the geographic boundary of the county. And then we, for the transportation piece, which is where we see a lot of impact from tourism, we have data from, I believe, the planning department on the vehicle miles traveled, and that's again, just in the geographic boundary. So if we think about emissions from people driving up from Denver for a race weekend, right? We wouldn't measure those emissions that are outside the geographic boundary of the county, but they're miles driven within the county, those emissions are included.
Okay, and because we're also a state, we have a state highway, like Highway 24, because we're also a through route, does that, does that impact our emissions or would that not be?
Yeah, so that's why I would say it's an art, not a sign. When we're estimating community-wide rather than global emissions, because we are getting those path-through, passed-through emissions, right? If someone's driving from I-7B down to Buena Vista, you, and they're not stopping in the county at all, those miles are still counting towards your community emissions. So.
Cool.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Commissioner, there was CDOC data included in that transportation capture, so there's highway mileage from CDOC.
Awesome. I was thinking about like the 50,000 folks who come up and climb Elbert, and they're not using any of our buildings, but they're all driving on our roads and impacting our community, so I was just curious.
Exactly, yeah. And I'd be interested, as we think about actions this summer and the engagement piece, how does the community want to address that? I think we've seen communities handle that in a lot of different ways, and I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all solution.
Gillian, where can we find this survey?
It is, that's a great question. We will send a link to Anne for the survey. It's available on Survey Monkey right now. I'm not sure that there are links on the county website just yet. Anne, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, so we are working with Sammy to get it on the website and also we've been talking within the steering committee as well as, this morning I talked to Claire at the OC about getting it on several different webpages. So we'll be hosting the survey on the county website as well. And it'll also be distributed today or tomorrow at the wildfire resilience fair with Kelsey. So she's helping kind of co-host information at the public health table tomorrow. But we'll also, just like the other studies and things that we're working on right now, we'll have a presence on the county website as well. So we can get you the QR codes for it, but we will be hosting it on the, on our site as well as throughout different departments on their home pages as well.
Quick question that I have. Gillian, forgive me if I wasn't listening closely enough and missed this, but were emissions from the landfill considered in this?
They were, yes. There was a solid waste. So waste and wastewater were about 8% of emissions, and that was based on the amount of waste from the county that goes to the landfill. So that, again, that geographic area, yeah.
I'm sorry, just following it. And so the plan will address any recommendations for the landfill or not? I'm just curious.
We can. I think that's a question. We generally look at the waste produced rather than the actual landfill operations. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, I'm just curious because there's some pending rulemaking that may come into play with the landfill. And I want to make sure that as we approach both issues, we're being consistent in our approaches with those.
The requirements under CDPH, we've got both with our well monitoring and our new requirement to line landfill and our methane gas emissions. So we've got, you know, additional requirements under CDPH to be monitoring those as well as some next steps and improvements that have to be done in the landfill.
Yeah.
Right.
Just want to make sure we're consistent between this plan and what we'll be doing there. And if, if we give public comment or to the rulemaking based on the impact it will have with the emissions and stuff like that.
Absolutely. And I think that's kind of the beauty of having the steering committee is that Michael and his team are also part of, you know, the oversight on providing guidance and information to Brendel. So they are plugged in to be able to give that information as we go through and complete the study and ready ourselves for implementation. The other thing that has been under discussion was including the city within this inventory. And so Dana has the spreadsheet of information now that is needed for the city to be included so that we have a community-wide outcome. And so she's reviewing the data collection on the city side and we, it'll be part of our recommendation of how we could support the city in gathering that data and so that we could have a study that is the whole community. And Dana is part of the steering committee.
And just to be clear, the inventory I shared today does include the city geographic area. We are working on that municipal operations piece, which will hopefully include both county and city recommendations and operational emissions.
How are we getting the survey out?
So.
Other than the tabling event tomorrow?
Absolutely. I will, so the one part for us for the survey is I think we're still looking at ways to partner and work with C4, and that'll be kind of incorporated in what we're going to talk about a little bit. And then also county staff coming on and helping through our communication tools and kind of the methods that we're using on other projects like the one community project and the other, the public health report that's being done right now. And so we would just kind of plug it in into kind of our matrix that we're currently working on on distribution, the mobility study, those kind of studies that are already actively engaged that we're looking for community input on. But Gillian may have some in addition to ideas.
Yeah, Anne, I think you covered it really well. We are exploring those options, right? I think we are discussing whether how we share it out and what makes the most sense. But yeah, Anne really covered the channels that we're looking at.
How have we included Climax in this conversation? When I think of electrical usage and heavy equipment operations, if we were, as a county, we're sort of starting to wonder what what changes we'd see if Climax were to make any major changes to their operations. And I wonder how that affects our pie chart that we were looking at. I don't even think I saw industrial carved out on that.
That is such a great question, and I should have added that caveat on our emission summary slide. So the only way that we can get data from those large industrial users for those process emissions are if they voluntarily provide them, which Climax did not. And, or if they are admitting enough that they reach a threshold where they have to report to the EPA, which Climax is below that threshold. So they are currently not included in the. So they are currently not included in the emissions inventory, which is a huge limitation of, again, that greenhouse gas accounting methodology. Um, as far as energy use, um, we know from Excel Energy that um, there are a couple of very large users in the county who, whose usage is so large that they could not be included in the usage totals that they provided us. Um, and they can't say who those large users are. But I think collectively, we can make assumptions about who they are. So it's important to note that there are a couple of very large energy users in the county that are currently not included in any of the data that we're receiving. Um, so that tells me, I, we would assume that if Climax does make changes, it would be positive globally, right? But you wouldn't see the impact on your emissions inventory, which is unfortunate.
Thanks. I have no more questions.
Me either. Okay, great, great. Well, thank you so much, um, Jillian and Imogen for that presentation. And just kind of moving into what the steering committee has been working on um, in this kind of just timeout to kind of reassess where we're at and next steps. Um, and so I think one of the things that we just want to highlight is um, the uh, we really identify the strength of our energy partner with C four. Um, you know, they have really established um, uh, a level of, of trust and engagement with our community. And so we really see the benefit of them being included in this project. Um, and they have been, there, there's a willingness to help us with the community engagement piece. They're just um, currently having some um, funding constraints that are, you know, kind of keeping them from being as engaged as they would like to. And so as Brindle was talking about, we've been working to see, is there an opportunity for Brindle to subcontract some of the public engagement piece with C four? Um, because they do have a um, established president, presence and trust within our community, particularly in um, those more vulnerable communities um, in Lake County and Lebel. And so we really see the benefit there. So um, our first conversations, uh, graciously Brindle has also understood how important we feel that C four is to this work. And so they have um, started discussions on ways that they may be able to um, kind of look for um, the ability to subcontract some of the scope of services under their contract. And of course, there's limitations to what they can um, do as well. Um, but that's one of the reasons that they're not in person with us today and why Kelsey has offered to co-host at um, the event tomorrow so that there was some um, realized savings for Brindle um, in uh, their community, uh, their community engagement scope. Um, but there still is a bit of a gap in um, where the funding would need to be in order for C four to be as plugged in um, as um, the steering committee would suggest would be beneficial for this project. So um, that is obviously a decision and discussion that we want to um, uh, just bring forward and then look for um, Candace and the board to think that through a little bit in, in, in um, deeper um, consideration. Emily is at a conference today, so she could not join us for this conversation. So we're just putting that out there, that, that we have tried to find ways to kind of look for opportunities within the existing scope of work. Um, but there um, probably needs to be a little bit of follow-up in what might be possible in engaging C four on the um, public engagement portion. So, um, but thank you to Brindle for finding ways that they might be able to carve out some opportunity to um, make that happen. So we'll leave that kind of open-ended um, for you to consider. Um, the other is um, you know, we're, we identify the strength within the steering committee for um, examples in real time, just like you brought up, Chris, um, to just make sure that we have a broader situational awareness throughout the organization and with the city um, as the scope of work um, uh, continues and, and then we're looking at implementation, being able to make sure that this is something that we already are looking to bring throughout both organizations, will create that situational awareness and make this a more successful plan for implementation. Um, that being said, um, we also see the strength in maybe continuing forward in, in kind of the thought process that was initially thought about in um, putting out to RFP, um, making a little bit of shift in that of not a um, FTE position, but knowing this is a three-year um, pot of money that we've been, uh, that we have through uh, the grant opportunity that we have, using the um, similar um, example of the city of Salida and Chieftain County, and this is just their RFP or RQ, um, that they have posted. We, we think this is a really good example of um, what we would recommend is going to um, something very similar. We could draft something very nimbly and quickly that we could get out um, for uh, uh, solicitation of um, to attract a consultant to come in and be the uh, contract sustainability contractor. And what we would hope to do is do something pretty quickly so that they could come in and add capacity to this project. Um, to work with Brindle on the plan and um, be the direct point of contact and then convene the steering committee on an as-needed basis so that we have one dedicated um, individual um, getting Brindle what they need in a very timely um, manner. And also, um, you know, the extent of what is needed at times by Brindle is um, you know, the breadth of that, it is, it can be a pretty big lift. And so we think that a contractor with his expertise could probably gain that information and get it to them very swiftly. Um, so we would hope it would support getting the plan finalized as well as use those funds um, that we've been able to secure in um, as intended. So this is written that at the end of the funding, this engagement may come to an end or it'll be reevaluated and determined if it's something that the county and the city um, would want to continue to explore um, a way to maintain this position. Um, but it's really designed for a contractor role and not um, an FTE. I thought we already talked about that. I thought that was the direction we were going in, right? Or not, because it's not a change.
Great.
It's not a change. There was, um, I, I thought for a moment whether or not um, there was value in um, potentially backfilling um, a role that already exists within community planning and development in the OWTS role, because there's seasonality to that. And we thought about backfilling it so that we could ensure that these goals and implementation kind of live within the organization on a long-term basis. So we did explore that option as well. Um, but we also see that there's other opportunities to backfill that position with some other meaningful work. And so we thought, well, this would be a way to be able to look at this annually and, and evaluate if we needed to bring some of these practices into the organization. But for the short term or for the next three years, this seems like a very manageable way to do it. Great. Any other questions for anyone on the steering committee or, or managing? Um, Duncan has been gracious to um, manage the um, the grants and um, the financial obligations under it. And so um, that is, we would just be looking to hopefully post the RFP, or RQ, excuse me, um, very quickly so that we don't take much of a timeout with Brindle and that we can get things back on track quickly. Is there room in our grant for the sustainability coordination to potentially add to the CAP?
To um.
To extend that, the, so we can include C four more, so we can find funding for C four?
Um, I think that this um, actually might even attract interest from C four as the organization. So I think that there is.
So this could be the wraparound to wrap them in. That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. We're hoping that they may have some interest in, um, I think that, you know, this has a lot of um, benefit to having someone that would be integrated already into our community in this role. So absolutely.
Well, we talked about that in this room with them, that they would be interested.
Great, great.
Um, I think looking to the future, the biggest aspect of this, uh, keeping the sustainability thing sustainable for the county is um, the goal they stated, that uh, this will help us prepare to access future funding opportunities. So I, I think I, I'm keen on that. I'd like to stay updated on how this is helping us secure grants or any other funds that we might have missed out on had we not had this. And that kind of helps balance the scales for me on this a bunch, so.
Did you, did you see that email from Emily yesterday?
No, I saw it, but I didn't dive into it.
There's like, there's a phase one of funding that could, there's five hundred fifty million, fifty million or five hundred?
I have a flag.
Fifty fifty, we're talking about State of Colorado, thank you. Fifty million dollars available in these, in.
Oh, the fifty-five, fifty-five million, yeah, whatever, I, I didn't see that, okay.
And phase one starts June ten, whatever, June. And counties have to have like certain policies adopted in order to access those funds.
Right, so who do we have who's jumping on those, who's, who's?
We can't, yeah, we need the, we need this person.
Yeah.
To be that, we need this consultant to be that person to help us be teed up for all of that funding.
Right, and that's kind of what the goal was, but this, all that fifty-five was from DOLA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I, the first option is something that, you know, it's also um, good to know the integration of how that would work, because that is some funding around um, the energy code. And we typically adopt energy code when we do building code, and we are in that cycle. So we would also be going out to the Board of Review here, we are construction experts, to look for a recommendation of the next adoption. Are we going to the two thousand and twenty-one code or are we going to the two thousand and twenty-four? And we usually align the energy code at the same time. So we do have um, a consistent, so as far as watchdogs for adoption of building code and energy code, that really your, you know, your kind of um, supports through that is your Board of Review and your building department staff. So they also um, help with the integration of that. And then there's other disciplines um, outlined through that grant as far as land use and transportation. And so again, having the steering committee along with the consultant really helps make sure that you get that integrated through the right departments.
So we got the plan, we need the contracted person to help us go after some of the meat and potatoes on this stuff so we can implement more plans under the plan.
So um, I would just ask, so this policy has just changed a little bit. Our next steps of it, as soon as we can draft this, which we can do pretty nimbly um, with the steering committee and get um, the RFP ready for review, once that's ready, that gets sent to um, Sandra and Legal?
So we can get it first and quickly, yeah.
Okay, so we will.
Just make sure we have a timeframe.
We can even probably get that over this week um, for review so that we can get um, get it up on our channels for recruitment and um, um, look for procurement of, of um, the right contractor. So we'll get that going this week and um, get it on, uh, out for review so that we can get it approved for um, posting.
And when Imogen and Jillian were talking about Brindle's scope potentially changing, what was that in reference to?
That was the um, public engagement. And that was um, C four taking over some of those tasks, whether they be more in the live event or the one-on-one and the group interviews. You know, I was thinking those are two places that they might be able to plug in. They shared all of the notes and from their Earth Day engagement, um, which was great.
Yeah, that was fun.
And so they shared all of um, that with Brindle. And there was an idea throughout this process that they would share notes and um, from any of the events that they were hosting um, for collaboration. Um, but hopefully, um, getting this position posted will be another way that we could maybe um, look to um, uh, further discussions with C four and how they can help support not only um, engagement with our community, but the long-term uh, implementation and sustainability of this. Great, well, thank you so much. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Imogen. Thank you, Jillian.
Thank you.
Well, we have a little bit of time here.
Adam can't be here until ten thirty, so maybe we just take um.
Take the twenty?
Fifteen minutes?
All right. All right, awesome. At ten twenty-two, we will resume this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We're being joined by Adam Ducharme, and we will get into Agenda Item Three, which is discussion of the Lake County Lodging Tax.
I don't see how to share that on Zoom, Adam.
Yeah.
Okay.
Join, wait, maybe I don't. How do I share it into?
Go, go down to Zoom, listen to.
Oh, boy.
Uh, no, minimize that.
Okay. Maybe I don't.
Just go, no, go down to Zoom.
Yeah, it was on the phone.
Click one on the right.
On Zoom, yeah, okay, Zoom.
And then the green button at the bottom.
Green, okay, share, got it. Sorry, I was just conducting a meeting in Google, so it was like.
Google, Zoom.
Yeah, okay.
All blended together.
Yeah, and then how do I do I just?
Two more from that top bar.
Okay.
Got a high floating meeting controls.
Duh, how did you not know that?
And make that other ones the tiniest bar. The, where we're looking at them.
Great.
We'll keep driving.
Okay, um, all right, so today we're going to be talking about the um, soon-to-be-passed-in-to-law uh, HB twenty-five twelve forty-seven. This is a county lodging tax expansion um, that may, is ma- making its way through the states. Legislature, so um, can I do this? There we go. Um, under the current law, uh, this is, you know, as, as it stands today, county lodging tax uh, can levy up to two percent on the purchase price paid or charged to persons for rooms or accommodations. This includes commercial lodging as well as short-term rentals, yada, yada, yada. Um, also camping is a percentage of campgrounds that, um, from the US Forest Service that comes in, tenth mountain huts, everything. Revenue from that tax is uh, is allowed to be used for advertising, marketing, housing and childcare, for tourism-related workforce, or facilitating or enhancing visitor experiences. Um, again, there is no oversight mechanism um, for housing and childcare tourism-related workforce. Um, but that is the, the way that, the, that it's written.
Well, wait, just to be clear though, you can pass a law that expands it to housing and childcare right now?
No, but like.
HB eleven seventeen?
Yeah, HB eleven seventeen, like you, you can divert funding to that, that's correct. But um, the, there, there are examples of communities that like are actually doing it without leveraging HB eleven seventeen, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's not how it's written.
Yeah, yeah, um, and facilitating and enhancing visitor experiences. Uh, and so, so this House Bill, uh, twelve forty-seven, uh, would, subject to local voter approval, the bill would in, uh, the bill increases the allowed rate of tax to up to five percent, so. Um, and expands the allowable uses, other than the ones we talked about, to public infrastructure maintenance or improvements and enhancing public safety, um, law enforcement, fire department, emergency medical services. Uh, if a county received voter approval before January first to specifically allocate portions of revenue for lodging tax, that's all just like, you know, but this is the, the language that it's written, um, is that you have to use them in the previous allocations before you can move forward with this new allocation for this five percent. It increase if you were to go to the voters to it. So um Lake County currently has a one point nine percent lodging tax, so when when we put our lodging tax in place, we did not go for the. Full two percent, we went for one point nine. Um, and uh Leadville, in the city of Leadville, we have an accommodations tax, so when you put an accommodations tax in place, that. Supersedes your county lodging tax, so before twenty twenty-one, twenty, yeah, up until twenty twenty-one. Anyone that stayed in any accommodation in the city of Leadville or in Lake County. They would be paying a one point nine percent lodging tax that would be remitted, collected and remitted at the point of sale. And then when Leadville passed the accommodations tax, which was two A. Um, that bumped up the um the amount that people paid on lodging up to four point nine two percent. Um, and that's called an accommodations tax, so then if someone stays in the city of Leadville, just want to make this really clear because it can get confusing quick. If someone stays in Leadville, they no longer pay that one point nine percent county lodging tax, they they only pay. The four point nine two percent accommodations tax. And that four point nine two percent of accommodations tax. Has to be colle- collected or the 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 job of the municipality is to collect. That accommodations tax. Um, so when two A was passed, um there was conversation around trying to continue the direct payment or the. Collect payment at the point of sale, because as you can imagine, that takes up the guesswork around whether or not someone has paid. That uh whether or not the. That four point nine two percent has been collected and remitted to the municipality. Um, the choice was to not do that and what the city of Leadville chose to do was to enter into an agreement with Muni Revs. Um, which is an org- which is a a company that basically will help you set up a um tax remittance um. Uh, the account and then you basically just, it's the the responsibility of the. Um, lodging owner to set up the account with Muni Revs and then remit at whatever. Um, time schedule works for them, either monthly, quarterly, or once a year even, you can do. Um, the four point nine two percent accommodations tax. And when two A was passed, the language was written in such a way that three percent of the accommodations tax would go towards supporting housing efforts. Uh, and then one point nine two percent would be remitted back to the county and allocated to the tourism panel. So basically making our our tax collections whole.
Is Muni Revs responsible for getting that one point nine two back to us?
No, just the city.
Are they, okay.
And so um so just.
Muni Revs is just a platform.
Just a platform, yeah, and I think that there was a thought, I I have to make assumptions and Elsa can correct me if I'm wrong here, but. I think there was a thought that Muni Revs would be a little bit more of a white glove service than it truly turned out to be.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense? Do you know what that means?
Yeah, like they just, somebody just filled nap and now.
And.
Be like a plug and play enough that you don't have to do any extra work.
Yeah.
Right, the thought from the city's perspective was like, we've hired Muni Revs, so they're gonna collect the taxes. And they're gonna work with all of the short-term rental owners and and accommodations providers to just collect this tax for us and we and we'll just. The the checks will come rolling in, um and we know for a fact. Um, you know, because it's because it's really easy to look at sales tax, right, because a one percent sales tax is always collected at point of sale. So you can use that data to understand how much money we should be getting.
Yeah.
So uh. We know for a fact that over the first year and a half of the program that we lost out on a hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue that should have come to the tourism panel.
Uh, is there?
Because people didn't set up their Muni Revs account, uh people didn't didn't understand. Uh, how the program worked, so they were they were just kind of waiting to see. Uh, before they remitted their taxes, so we know for a fact that um the tourism panel. Lost out on a hundred thousand dollars worth of back taxes, um that at this point, the statute of limitations on that has expired.
Okay.
And um our tourism panel um chair at the time, um who shall remain nameless. Uh, was nice enough to go in front of city council and ask that the tourism panel be made whole. Because the data is the data, like we know exactly how much we should have been. Should have been remitted to us and um city council um uh was not willing to do that.
Yes, for years. Yes, for years. They don't do it, they're shit too.
And so how much does Muni Rev take a figure?
They don't make a percentage.
You pay, you pay a subscription, a subscription fee.
Subscription.
So um so.
Over two years, we lost more than that, but the first year was the most.
Yeah, the.
Because what had been happening was that previously, these Airbnb VRBOs, they would collect. They would collect the taxes at point of sale or admit it to the state. So so users, and it still happens for people in the county, users don't have to worry about their tax collection, collection and remains. But once the city did this, then everybody had to start doing it on their own and nobody knew how to do that, everybody's just like a. Most people are just like trying to rent out their basement or their A D or whatever, so they didn't understand what was going on.
And we know that enforcement and I actually having a human being sort of. Enforce this is the missing piece, um because um Elsa asked the city in twenty-three. Right, is that twenty-three, asked the city, would you like me to help with this, like in terms of. Going through and making sure all the people who have licenses are actually remitting their taxes and they said yes. So Elsa, starting at the end of Q two and twenty-three, started reaching out to license holders and asking them. Do you know about Muni Revs, have you set up your account, blah, 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 blah? And in uh Q three of twenty twenty-three, we saw a thirty-six percent jump in revenue. For the tourism panel. Um.
I did a whole like operational.
Not bills.
Oh, thanks, I did a whole operational audit for them, I was like, hey, this is what you're missing, this is what people don't understand, this is what all your policies look like and you're. On, you know, on these different platforms, this is how they're not aligning, this is what I'd recommend. In terms of like hours, person hours per week.
That was twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
What's happening?
I did the whole audit and I give, I like presented the audit at the end of twenty twenty-three.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
At the one, and then what's happening, who's there?
Uh, the the revenues have been um more in keeping with what we saw before the accommodations tax came into play, so.
They didn't, they didn't make. They didn't make any of those shipments, so they recommend.
No, but they did hire Deckard, so they now are are, they now have two subscriptions that they pay with two different platforms. Muni Revs being one and then um Deckard, who, so Muni Revs is how they deal with collections and Deckard is how they deal with enforcement. So Deckard sends out cease and desist letters and things like that for people who are not in compliance with the license program. Um, so uh and as just a point of reference, uh that one point nine two percent um that comes to us, they do take out half of the subscription fee for Muni Revs.
I told them they have to stop doing that. Because it's written in the ballot language that we get the one, the full.
Alright, I will I will talk to Crystal about that because I know that they have them.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Cool.
I love that project, in my mind, I was like, this is economic development, if we're not getting, if we're not making sure that we're competing. For people to know about Leadville, then we're not gonna see growth or even like sustained visitorship. So in my mind, our marketing dollars are really crucial to our economic development.
Yeah, I mean, you said there's evidence of when a a community drops their marketing budget, it takes like ten years to claw that back.
A decade, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, and yeah, we uh, yeah, the case study from the state of Colorado was they cut twelve million dollars from the marketing budget. And over the course of a decade, they lost two point three billion dollars a year. Because they and because they experienced a a a twenty-eight percent loss in market share. So those are, because they were not in front of people, people went other places. So um, so uh I'm I'm setting the stage for sort of like what we're talking about in terms of real numbers for us. So in twenty twenty-four, Lake County with the one point nine percent lodging tax that's col- collected at point of sale. Um, our total revenue was a hundred and fifty-five, you can see the number. And then uh in twenty twenty-four, the Leadville accommodations tax that flowed back to the tourism panel was a hundred and thirty-six, so that's a total. Of two hundred ninety-one. Thousand dollars that, or you know, two hundred ninety-two. So that's our total, my total budget for the visitor center, my staff, every, all the marketing promotion, everything I do. Is that two hundred ninety-one thousand dollar uh number. So, so um, this right here is just a comparison um that um shows, and this was put together by Cisco Tharp. But it shows in the city of Leadville.
Mm-hmm.
Where where they have this um, where they have the accommodations tax. Uh, the four point nine two percent that uh where we stack up in terms of our neighboring communities. In terms of how much people are taxed when they come here, so uh you know, Aspen being one, Denver being two, Silverthorne, Salida. Leadville is number eleven on that list, below us in terms of the amount people are taxed when they stay. Is Vale, Breckenridge, Buena Vista, Carbondale, Granby, so uh. For me, you know, again, you can see it here, Julie, if you like to see things differently visually.
That's a percentage, total tax.
Yeah, exactly, so it, well, this is the amount, the total tax amount, so yeah, twelve point sixty-two percent. Um, so like if a room costs a hundred dollars, you're taxed twelve dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, and so, and again, Aspen, that's on par with Las Vegas, um.
And then you can see it's broken up into like, well, what kind of taxes make up that total?
Yep, so you know, this is the pool tax, this is the um accommodations tax. Uh, so the point being that um. One of our major marketing tools for the past three decades has been that we are a um. High-value destination to stay in because though we do not have a modicum of the um. Um, restaurants, shops, experiences, assets, sort of what I would call, what we call products. We have none of those things compared to Aspen and Denver and Silverthorne. Um, but what we do have is you can stay here for an affordable rate and experience all the awesome things we have. But as you can see, when we're taxing people more than Vale. Um, I would offer that there are more things to do in Vale and Breckenridge than there are in Leadville. So when we talk about taxation and taxation as a tool. Um, to be able to backfill, um having our tourism economy help contribute to and backfill some of the. Um, projects and specific services that um we very, very, very quickly experienced diminishing returns. Um, and we're already starting to see that in Leadville. So um this right here shows a supply chain change, so this was the loss of the Silver King and in suites. So this is the largest loss of inventory in terms of supply change that we've experienced since the eighties, basically since the mine closed.
What were all the hotels we had in?
I know.
The eight, in eighty-eight?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
I know, I I think that that's probably when, uh, I don't exactly know what properties they were, but that was when.
Was that when the Tabor Grand went to rentals instead of?
No, no, that that's a, that's a plus.
Oh, well, that's what I'm saying, like. It dropped at the end, you know, between eighty-eight and ninety.
We have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm wondering what changed, what went from short-term to apartments?
Yeah, that could be it.
It's a huge change.
Mm-hmm.
Not about now, but it's just really interesting.
Yeah, so um so I. As you can see, you know, we are uh, this is, we have not seen a supply, a negative supply change like this. Um, in thirty-plus years, so uh and then also with that. Our demand change is net negative and a lot of that has to do. Uh, this was the COVID era stuff, right, so everyone's staying here. And then this is right around the time, I mean, this is when the county put in their moratorium on short-term rental licenses. And um, this is when we basically enacted the short-term rental. Um, you know, keeping the licenses as they were, not allowing any additional. And what we're seeing here, again, this is anecdotal from me, is saying that is is this. Uh, perception that there's nowhere to stay in Lake County, so um during the mud season, that is obviously not true, but when people want to be here, the times when we actually experience the highest amount of visitation. Um, there is a perception, um, you know, we have two hundred and two commercial beds in our entire community, in all of Lake County. We have three hundred short-term rental licenses, right when this was happening, right when we saw this demand, when we saw this demand surge. That was at a time when we had uh, we had over five hundred short-term rental listings on Airbnb and VRBO. And at a time when, you know, all of our commercial properties were um operating, so we did didn't, hadn't lost the Silver King. Um, you know, uh, you you get the picture on, the picture that I'm creating here.
That's actually two A, that that spike, that that's like, the spike is February of twenty twenty-two, which would have been within the first quarter of two A.
Mm-hmm.
Being enacted.
Yep, yeah, and then.
So then there was like, then there was. What do you call that, when you start?
Diminishing returns, yeah.
Then everything got complicated, complicated.
Yeah.
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 Also, the uh, you know, free market, whatever, but just the cost of getting your average SDR. I feel like it's almost doubled since that peak, you know, like, it seems like you used to be able to find.
Yep. Yep.
An Airbnb for, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks, now it's like three to four hundred dollars, yeah, most of them.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other thing I was gonna bring up is pretty much all of our, including our commercial lodging partners are all respond, so. Short-term rentals, right around two twenty twenty-two is when they pretty much all moved to a dynamic pricing model. Where you could literally let the algorithm decide, hey, what's the demand in your area? Change the price based on, you know, it's no longer the the short-term rental owner sort of deciding what the price should be. And that has had a huge impact on um how much short-term rentals are charging and then therefore. Commercial lodging partners have to respond in kind, I mean, I'm not saying that they're they're like, I'm just saying that they did. And so now that's how you get the thousand dollar a night hotel rooms is like pretty much all of the, like the Delaware and places like that have turned on dynamic pricing models. Where like Cloudbed and all of the platforms they use for booking, they will say, hey, you're you're low for tonight, you know? When I, when I was managing hotels, it was literally like finger in the wind and literally driving down the block and seeing what other people were charging, you know? So that's having a net negative plus all of macro factors, but the point is, is we are now at a place where our demand is really low. Um, lower than other times in terms of. Folks wanting to stay here.
More stuff for them to do.
Exactly, more stuff for them to do and more places for them to stay, that actually are the types of accommodations that they're looking for. So um, and here's just another chart, you know, here's another reason why demand and it's what you're talking about here. So um, this ch- charts occupancy versus ADR, which is average daily rate and rev part, which is how much revenue you make. And um I think that the shocking thing to look at is ADR, average daily rate, you know, again, for Leadville, this isn't um. We don't have the highest average daily rates in the world, but what you're seeing here from twenty twenty, from the start of COVID is. Every single short-term rental and commercial accommodation in Lake County has continued to bump up their average daily rate. And um by doing so, they've been able, they are all maintaining kind of a a a similar revenue, this is the least drastic. Sort of change, so they're they're not quite yet, and by extension, we are not quite yet, fully experiencing diminishing returns. Because they bumped their rates up and therefore they're able to, you know, keep revenue coming in, but when you look at occupancy.
Mm-hmm.
That, that is the first indicator that will then, these will all start to go down.
Yeah.
Um, so um, the, you you get the doom and gloom I'm painting here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and occupancy versus ADR, right? Like as soon as your occupancy dips below your ADR, like you're you're um. You're in trouble, once. You're in trouble, once these things start trailing like that, so.
Yeah, it's the anchor that's gonna sink everything else.
Exactly, so um uh.
I mean, I just wanna say also, like as a hotel manager, like hotels, commercial versus. STRs are a really different business model.
Hundred percent.
The amount of staff and like keeping up with cost of living.
Yep.
And consumables that you have to manage as a hotel versus as an STR.
Yep.
Makes you need to increase, like try to increase your RevPAR.
Yep.
And you've got other people who can like just get people in for more cost, even though they're not increasing their occupancy. They're like, oh, I'll I'll, I can give up occupancy if I'm getting people in for more money.
Totally.
It's it's they're like two different business models competing in the same industry.
That's right, and and sorry, this is one other thing to talk about in terms of what you're talking about here. Is um from a commercial lodging standpoint. Uh our forecast is that the market's sale price per room. The fact that our market sale price per room is under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars compared to all of our neighboring communities is shockingly low. So this is a really awesome data point for me to present to commercial lodgers. To say, hey, everything's a pendulum and we're in the low part of the pendulum right now. But if you start doing your work right now and you have a property that is doors open in five, six years. You're gonna be building rooms at a much lower cost here than than the Vale Valley or Summit County. Um which, by the way, I didn't wanna like overdo it on charts, but in twenty twenty one. Um Summit County built over a thousand hotel rooms and Vale Valley built over two thousand short term rental, like purpose built short term rentals. Um so they responded to COVID by building up their supply. And they're now in a much different place and same thing with Chaffey, actually, Chaffey is see, they're on the right side of this curve because they built supply at the right time. So I would offer, like, this is the right time to, for folks to be really thinking about investing in commercial property here.
Adam, does that include STRs in the sale price per room?
Nope. Nope.
That's just commercial.
Just commercial.
Okay, cool.
Yep, um and the other thing just to point out is that our 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 main street. Um you know, people coming to Lake County, not staying in Lake County, but people visiting um continues to increase. So the little things we can control, which are marketing. Um we are seeing the positive impacts of that, people are still coming here, but they're not staying here because there's nowhere to stay. Like quote, nowhere to stay, that's a hyperbolic statement. Um so uh we, again, we have the attention of folks, but we don't, um we need them to stay overnight, so.
Good spread and breakfast?
Good spread and breakfast, let's go, brilliant, Adam. Brilliant.
Um fix snowmaking on Main Street and do ski drawing in the middle of the summertime too?
Brilliant.
So I I just to kinda close the loop on uh this um conversation around this five percent, the potential five percent increase. Um just to go back to these numbers here. Um if we were to go to the vote of the people and increase the lodging, the lodging tax in the county up to five percent. You know, that would put Lake County on par with, again, taxing more than uh our neighboring communities unless they would also leverage it. But the amount of money that we're talking about that would actually go towards uh roads and the fire department and things like that. Um is like a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Per year.
Per year, uh like as in, as in, if you were to just increase that and take all that money and go. Um and that's now, that's with the, but if you look at that demand curve and you look at the RevPAR. That is, that is best case scenario based on twenty twenty four revenue. So with the, how much that would erode our our perceived value? How much that would, how much we're already in this position of being eroded based on supply and demand? Um you know, again, the, I I just, I have all this other information that I just got access to around. The only segment of the hospitality industry that is not gonna suffer in twenty twenty five is luxury travel. And we have nothing, you know, we don't have that product at all in our community.
Mm-hmm.
Um so full service, any rest, any, any hotel, even a Marriott. That is full service, AKA they have like ice machines and carts to put your luggage on. And a place where you can check in twenty four hours a day and a like a bar with like Captain and Coke. That's considered a full service, you know, hotel, and we don't have that. Um so that's the only mark, segment of the industry that's not gonna suffer this, for the, you know, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Why does it seem like the uh bigger motel down at the end, down past Fincow's always like half empty?
Because they are.
Well, I mean, is it like trashy? I've never been there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's real bad, it's real bad. Um but and the other reason why they are able to maintain any uh occupancy is that they're the only hotel in our community that can provide um a standard rate. So government employees.
Yeah, okay, it's always like boom trucks and like fleet vehicles that are.
More transient type stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and and they literally are required, they're they're required, they can't rent a short term rental, so they're required to have a group rate. Um and it's a choice hotel, it's a choice hotel.
I hate being like the uh. Enforcement uh type or person in certain aspects, but is there certain regulations and stuff that they're not following? That would translate to a more desirable experience, that would translate into better user numbers? Or is there like a state motel regulatory body that?
Be better.
Like, yo, clean up your stuff, bro.
I.
Vacuum.
Um.
There there is a.
We're in a public meeting, so.
As I was saying, yeah, there is an association, but.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
And and there has, there has been exploration, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Uh yeah, I always forget that we're not just chatting.
It's just, well, you know, it's all, it's just, this is purely from the angle of like, it'd be a benefit for the community. To make sure someone was operating their business up to a state mandated standard. That would at least provide some modicum of like um an enhanced, you know. Being more attractive to people traveling through or whatever, you know?
I've reached out to the.
And for their own business.
I've reached out to the owners and the management of um the property we are discussing um several times. And explained uh the community support program, uh explained um. How much I would like to work with them and partner with them uh and explain how there's literally just money on the table for things like signage.
Mm-hmm.
And facade improvements and things like that, and I've never received a reply.
I mean. They were in the paper last year.
Was that last year?
It's more business practice. It felt like it was last year, but I don't.
The really bad stuff.
The really bad stuff was like five years or four years.
That wasn't five years ago.
I think it, it was, man, it was a while ago.
It's been so long.
It, yeah.
Do they also have a restaurant attached to it?
They own that building, yeah.
Or what, used to be, the barbecue joint?
Oh, no, no, it's a separate.
Yeah, actually, their plant had the international.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
And it was that building.
Yeah, you're right.
That they were gonna turn into veterinary clinic rescue type thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But there are major issues with that and it was one of those situations where it just got cost prohibitive for them to do that. So it is pretty much just sitting there right now.
Yep.
There's part of it in the front that probably is.
I mean.
Rehabilitating, you know, for that, if you want to put the right, like the back end of it is.
It's not available, and yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the curious things that I, Adam, can you go to the graph of the occupancy? This one is the one that, I mean, as a hotel manager, it was always hard to. It was hard for me to get above fifty five percent occupancy and obviously it was like a new hotel. But if you're getting enough money to cover your expenses and you don't, and occupancy doesn't matter, and you're just like, this is good enough. Any RevPAR?
Mm-hmm.
This is good enough, like maybe market forces, once that starts to dip, will. Require that people drop their prices to increase their occupancy, cause their RevPAR is so dismal. But they're not gonna do it until they have to. And I'm, and for that, I'm talking about like STR owners, STR owners, sometimes you're trying to make money, but sometimes you're just trying to cover your mortgage. And your investment property, so there's no, and there's no like motivation. There's no motivation to.
Yep.
Make more money, which also means that if you're charging more for your rooms. And you're not doing turnovers, then that's not money that you're paying to people in your job creation. Just saying, I've got a thing against STRs, I think the industry is.
Oh, it's super predatory.
It's super predatory.
Yeah, and again, I I think that's something for you all to understand is we have two hundred and two commercial beds. And we have, for all intents purposes, you can call it like five hundred. Short term rental beds, cause we have three hundred, three hundred short term rental licenses, so yeah, I mean, really.
Yeah, most of them are like, oh, and there's a bullet couch, and there's a, you know.
Yeah, 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 so again, um I I what I, the picture that I really wanna paint for you. And I mean, I will just, you know, give you my staff recommendation. Is that this right now is the absolute worst time for us to consider something like this bill increase. Um because again, we will, we we are in for uh some, a tough road ahead. Um in terms of the market forces working against us, we're going to be swimming upstream for a few years. And I am gonna, this is the perfect time for for this community to engage with and try and understand. And put together the right opportunity for commercial lodging investment that um. Uh and then if we were to have two hundred, three hundred commercially built rooms. Um and they were actually contributing to the 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 tax base in such a way. Uh that we were able to be in a much better position, sure, I I'm all for having this conversation. But right now, we're literally stealing from Peter to pay Paul in in the worst kinda way if we were to support something like this.
Oh, yeah. Adam, is it also a recommendation, I'm hearing this loosely from you, but maybe not directly, of like readdressing our cap on short term rentals?
Yeah, hundred percent, so I mean, well, as in, you know, I I understand, short term rentals are are problematic. I, here's what I will say is, I know in the county, we have short term rental licenses available. And you know, so that it's not like there there are people climbing over each other to get short term rental licenses in the county. I think the city is a different story, I think the city um. It would be a really smart move to reconsider the amount of licenses available in the city. Um what I will say is the natural barrier in the county is the amount of properties that are on septic and the septic requirements. Um so uh for instance, unincorporated Lake County, headed south, anything in that direction. There are issues with the lack of a metro district, sanitation district that can help serve. The wastewater and what I've learned, what I learned is when you have a large property and that large property sits vacant. And then you get eight to ten people into that property. And they, everyone's taking showers and everyone is using the facilities, that you can shock a a septic system. Because it can't take that much flow all at once, and then that's how you run into issues with some of the aging septic. I- infrastructure, which was the impetus for creating the septic requirements that they they created. Um and within the county and um those barriers to entry are too much for um some short term rental owners. In terms of the investment they'd have to make in a brand new septic system that would get them to be compliant with the license requirements is too much of a lift. It would take them fifteen years to to, with short term rental license, with short term renting, based on the occupancy levels they experience to get, to make that money back.
There's something I haven't really heard anyone talk about before, and I don't know if it's even a thing or if it exists. But I know like up in the Great Lakes area, people will rent out their boat, something you can stay on, it's not gonna leave the dock. It's just, it's a place you can rent to stay on. Do people, is there a way to do that around here with like, you can rent this camper trailer in our yard? For only a certain amount of time before you've gotta empty all the stuff out again, right? Is there like any kinda low cost rentals that you can rent somebody's RV?
So the closest, the closest thing to that would be Hip Camp. Um and there are examples of that here, but technically we do not, from what I understand, we don't have code.
Right.
That's what I said, the code wouldn't allow that.
I've seen it on Airbnb that.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
Christmas weekends, the holiday weekends.
Oh, yeah, they do, but I mean, you're.
Oh, yeah, so there, there, I I'm trying to be very thoughtful with my words here.
Yeah.
Um there are examples of those, but we do not have the code that would allow for it.
Would that be something worth having more discussions about?
Certainly.
Most certainly? Would it be a boon to the community, like economy wise?
I mean, a boon, no, but it would help all these things, again, our code not.
Well, yeah.
Commercial, commercial.
Choose your words wisely.
Our commercial hotel would be huge though.
Yeah, but that's a five year out, you know, we can't.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just looking at more low hanging fruit, lots of different, small.
Sure. Having our code work for us would.
Taking away at the bigger problem.
Having our code work for us in terms of being more economically viable.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of examples of that in the the county and the city.
Well, that's at odds with the other. Things we discussed this morning, uh you know, every, every code change makes everything more expensive. Every time you add insulation or add regulations.
I guess it would almost be like taking away some of the.
Well, but.
Yeah, I I think this would just be.
Not good.
Working out grid, all of the codes that we have and determining which serve us the best and which could.
Might be holding us back.
Be streamlined to meet all of our needs.
Yeah, what are barriers versus actual regulations that we have?
Yeah, are we interested all from bigger hotel chains or who, I know you've been talking.
Yeah, 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 I mean, again, it's, so the way that development um works, like from the standpoint of commercial. Like that hotel development is like uh Ma- Marriott, um you know, I I have Anne's number. She is totally a hundred percent on board with getting at least one to three Marriott's here in this community. But then what you need is, you need the money slash developer and you need the operator. And getting all three of those at the same time is the the trick. Where we have plenty of, I I currently know of somebody who's really interested in operating here. Um that is a really, really big, well established company in this area. And I know of two to three people that really, really wanna develop here and have financial backing, but getting all three of those to be.
And what's the third one? Get the developer, get the operator?
Uh you you need, yeah, so you you need the um develop, developer money, you need the, you need the flag, the Marriott. So you need that buy in, we have that, um we have operators that are interested and we have the money slash developer. Need all three to be on the same page.
Where would this?
And yeah, there are sites, site specific, there's three, there's four, four sites that would be buildable. Yeah, that would be really, you know, all of them have their own unique opportunities.
Is there any barriers on our end that we could help lower?
Yeah, for sure, yes.
Specifically?
I think I need a little bit more time in week three to really meet. With a few people and understand what I don't understand to kind of just say, hey, hear the barriers. That's really why I've been meeting with different departments uh and staff one on one to start to understand the context of where. Where the barriers are, so if you can give me a week, I can have that answer for you.
Yeah, yeah, give herself more than a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three more weeks?
Three more months?
Yeah.
Three, three.
Well, I'm not a proponent of more accommodations tax, so, or whatever, lodging tax.
Yeah, I was expecting the exact opposite from you this morning, maybe you can then say. It's a new law, we can rate, you can go to the voter, so I'm glad you didn't do that.
Nope.
Everything you said makes sense, as usual, Adam, you're really smart.
You're really smart, Adam, good job.
Mm, yeah, I uh well, thank you, uh but I, yes, okay, now I need to like switch my brain off of thinking about that stuff. But yes, uh I'm, if you, the only other, like I need, you know, you were kinda hinting at this, there's a, there's actually four things. If you, the only other, like I need, you know, you were kind of hinting at this, there's a, there's actually four things you need, right? Because you really need the land, the land is the huge part, like the viable land. Um and um I think one thing that I can say and I feel very confident about saying is. Um that um every, all the land in Lake County presents unique challenges. And so every one of the places, the four places that I know about have a unique challenge that involve jurisdiction. So um and probably the the linchpin or the one that is the common um issue at all.
Really, I guess.
Guess.
Uh sanitation.
Ding ding ding, Leadville sanitation, so.
I missed you in the signature.
Yeah, so that's why we we were supposed to go tour it this week, but we're gonna tour on the thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
So that community planning and development can be present.
Yeah, nice.
Um so, yeah, so uh but you will, um we will talk at length about that as a common, I think. Should, just to give you like an idea of what the, what I'm talking about is. Um at, I don't know if you're familiar with the Evergreen property, um but behind the Columbine and Suites, that area.
Mm-hmm. That was gonna be our big hotel and indoor water park for a while.
Exactly.
But like, yeah, now it's, yeah, now it's cross country skiing.
Yeah, and um.
Sand waiver though.
When that, when that land was purchased, um they did establish a metro district there. Because especially at the time, there was an understanding that Leadville sanitation would 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 not be able to serve them as a. Um you know, would not be able to serve their sanitation needs, so they'd have to create their own sanitation. Uh facility and I think that a few things to note there, the biggest being that. The state Colorado is not really in favor of creating a bunch of separate metro districts. Um throughout a small community and I think from a uh resiliency standpoint, that makes perfect sense. Because if you were to have, let's say, a large scale grid failure, having like three or four different failure points from a sanitation. Uh standpoint, especially when like I, you know. All of them are co-located so close to the Arkansas River is is disastrous, right?
Maybe um.
We're talking about a major ecological disaster.
Our sustainability director, contractor could find us DOLA money to help improve our wastewater from a climate. Action plan perspective.
Well, it's just got hours, it's, we could we partner with the Leadville sanitation and.
Sustainability.
Partner with them, like.
I mean, that that grant is meant to be for the entire community, so it could.
It would help the community if we built another many wastewater treatment plant like they have out there, the Village Esports.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
I feel like centralizing your sanitation facility is the the way to go. Again, seven thousand humans is not that many humans. So within reason, again, gravity is the only thing that actually is working, you know.
Yeah. We know what flows downhill.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Good vibes.
Good vibes, yeah.
Good vibes.
So, yeah, I mean. Like just as an example, you know, again, trying to think about leveraging smart lift station facilities and trying to. We'll talk about all this on the thirtieth, but at the end of the day, the point is, is the more that we can. Like and and Josh is very, very knowledgeable about this, the more that we can centralize and improve. The infrastructure to the one place we have. Um it's gonna be the smartest long term investment.
I'll be sure to report it here more knowledgeable about sanitation than I am, depending.
I have learned a lot about human poop, but yeah, the the um. The point is, is I know that that landowner is really invested in in. One of the things that has made been such a challenge for him in terms of, so he owns the land, right? And then I talked about the the next piece you need is the developer with money that's actually gonna do it. And then, you know, in that place, that's where Marriott goes, heck, yeah, we'll sign a letter of commitment. This is awesome. You've got the money. You've got the um developer that knows how to build this type of property. And oh, look, you have a letter of commitment from the operator that's not the this developer, amazing. That's how you line it all up and finding that money developer piece when you're saying. You're gonna have to build your own wastewater treatment facility, the math becomes um pretty darn, yeah, untenable pretty quickly, so.
So we need some crapper pipes.
Crapper pipes.
You have lift stations to that.
Exactly.
To get all the trailer park or air capture parks on there too.
Exactly. Yep. That's right.
Could expand, oh, do some tiny one parks and uh.
That's right. That's right, that's right.
Perhaps Leadville sanitation would be more meaningful to lift stations and stuff going forward.
Yeah. They are, yeah, they are.
Because they haven't in the past, they've been very.
Yeah, so they've been in it. Yeah, and um and one of the benefits of Josh coming in is that he was able to explain to the board. The old, the old board, so the new board is like, oof, uh but I'm getting ahead of myself, the um they use, the old.
Wait, did we just get a compliment?
Sandy Gork.
Oh, okay.
Sanitation.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
Did they work that through though?
Sorry, I. I'm sorry, I, that's a, that's a tough, no, I'm just kidding. Uh the the point is, is there, the old way that they used, Leadville sanitation used to talk about lift stations is the fact that we're so far away from the supply chain. And that if there was ever a failure, that that would be catastrophic. Um but what Josh was able to explain to the Leadville sanitation board is that he would never suggest a system that did not have a set of at least. Three to four redundant or two to three redundancies. And he was able to show them models that that sufficiently assuaged their fears. So that it's like, no, I wouldn't just put one pump there and then if it breaks, call for parts and wait a week. I would have redundancies in place um so that we would never be without. And that was enough for them to be much more comfortable with the proposition.
It's just like a traffic plan, but free.
And these, these models were hypothetical or actual systems?
Actual, actual systems.
Across the country that were up and running.
Hundred percent.
Well, that's really good news. We need to pursue that.
Yes, amen. And again, that's really for me, when I think about economic development, like I always say is like. Until we fix these infrastructure things, it's like I I love this and I love Jeff Fiedler to death. But I remember when I was first considering this transition to Ted, he said, I need you on the phone just calling companies. Just cold calling companies to attract them here. And it's like, talk about the worst handoff in the world, where it's like, yeah, come here, come here. Oh, by the way, you can't get a will serve letter over like fifty units, you know, from our sanitation district. It's like, it's it's um there, we have certain barriers. We have to crawl before we can walk, before we can.
Yeah.
So what we need is a poop action plan.
A poop action plan?
Poop action plan.
PAP.
P A P.
P A P, oh my god.
Oh, my god, PAP.
Yeah.
Let's do it, how about, let's call it a, we can, we're really missing an opportunity here, but let's, two O words we can use instead of action.
Every three years, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Operational objective.
We're operational optimization.
Boom, operational optimization plan.
Awesome.
A poop plan.
Oh, my god, I would make a PowerPoint for that if y'all want.
Yes, please.
Yeah, after we do this.
Do that with your time, with our brain.
Well, after the site visit, we'll do it.
So this site visit, we're gonna go on, we're gonna go into this stuff and then are they looking for a partnership from the, from looking at?
They're not, they're not looking for anything. I am, I am the one who is saying that I need my three commissioners to go onsite. And actually put eyes on exactly what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um so that we all, and talk through this, talk, keep talking about poop. Um so that we all understand exactly where we're at for all the times that we are talking about planning.
Moving forward.
And economic about them.
But that's a huge infrastructure investment.
Yes, sir.
Huge for them.
Yes, sir.
So they would, how would that work? A tax, some great funding?
There, I mean, there, again, Josh is is very, very pragmatic.
Yeah.
And has really done, and I don't wanna speak for him, but he's done a really good job of breaking down what needs to happen into bite sized chunks. Um but yeah, sure, give it eighteen million would get us there today. So, um but but again, that's the. In in lieu of having eighteen million today, we need to do this and then we need to do this and we. And I don't know, maybe it's just because I'm a visual person, I really need y'all to like look at it and see it.
Yeah, let's take a look at it, but generally a lift station is as low as Twin Lakes or just the?
Oh, no, so the Twin Lakes is a whole other discussion.
Just the trailer, the, below the trailer park.
Yeah.
To get below, to get this trailer park over there.
Yeah.
Um that uh lift stations would be able to, from what I understand, lift stations would work it.
Yeah.
But the Twin Lakes situation is a, is a whole other one.
And then the the lift station over here on ninety one and twenty four would also grab that new hotel.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And then one down south.
That's right, mm-hmm, yeah, and um, yeah, and but if you, you should ask Josh this question, like where would you, if you could just blink your eyes and. Forget Leadville sanitation is here, do you wanna re, because I did ask him that question because it was fun, like.
Relocate.
Relocate, there is a, he has a location in mind that would, that would, yeah, and again, I don't wanna speak for him.
Yeah.
Um but that would serve the whole community.
With gravity, which is.
With gravity.
Super in the end.
Which again, if we, that's like if we were being wicked smart, like wicked smart.
Uh that's you, that's not us.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's not me. I was presumed to speak, but it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Well, cool, man, let's take a tour of the poop facility.
Yeah. All right, awesome, thank you. That is what I wanted to discuss with you.
Yeah.
Sweet, thanks, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Really excited about our poop operations optimism.
Operation poop. Okay, have a great day.
Thanks, Adam.
All right, see you.
Really?
Wanna close this out, Brad?
Maybe it gets to work.
Well, it's eleven eighteen, we will conclude today's work session with Lake County, Florida County.
Good finish.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, everyone.
See you all at one.